I would like to call to order the Monday, February 18th, 2013, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At 5:00, we were hosted by the NC Cooperative Extension Center for their annual report, and they fed us a very nice meal and did a very nice program. And that's where we were until now. And I guess, Item A is invocation. We have Mr. Daniel Bergy from New Life Church. Would you lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance? Please stand.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Father, I thank you for this wonderful day. What a beautiful day even to remember our presidents who have helped mold and build this wonderful country. And so, Father God, we are even talked about even in Scripture to pray for those leaders. And so, tonight, I pray for our president. I pray for our leaders of the country, just as well as I pray for these commissioners that stand in front of us today. Father, I pray that you would give them wisdom. I pray that you would give them courage and strength to make the decisions needed for the citizens of this county. Father, I thank you for their service tonight to this county. And so, Lord God, even as we meet together, I pray for the comment sections, for the agenda, Lord God, and may you guide and direct us through your Holy Spirit in all of this. And we give you praise in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bergy, thank you very much. Next item is approval of agenda. Need to add one item. And the board appointments, Item 4, is an additional appointment to the small area plan. And with that, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Have a motion for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? Motion carries. Public comment, we have Mr. Earl Roundtree. Is there a first signed up? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Earl Roundtree, 226 Folly Road, Sunbury, North Carolina. That's in Gates County. I just came over here tonight for three reasons. Number one, I noticed that Paul doesn't have any water here for me, Paul O'Neal.
That's right there.
Paul Martin had offered to put something here for me, but he didn't ever get to do that. I came in here to see whether or not that how well I might be received. I've been here a couple of times before, and I think the last time I left, some people thought that I was a little upset because I wasn't treated right. So, I was insured if I come back, I'd be treated better. So, I just come back to see. And then, Paul Martin tells me if I'd have stopped down the road, I could have got some fried chicken, and he was inviting me after the fact. I have nothing. I come just to see if Paul O'Neal would get nervous. When I come in, I knew he would be nervous because he's saying, "What in the world is this guy gonna do to me tonight?" Nothing. Relax, Paul. Why? I have two things really. Number one, and this is a little bit early, but I didn't know where I'd be in March, has nothing to do with county business, but it does something to the citizens of Currituck County, to the boards of commissioners, and all the people here. At the Museum of the Alamoar, on March, the Sunday, March the 17th, we're gonna have a program, and it has to do with a county native, F.J. Outland senior. Now, I was, well, I did it myself. I'm gonna pat myself on the back because I don't like committees. You know, dictatorships work good if you're the dictator. But he was a survivor on the USS Annapolis in World War II. And a lot of people unfortunately do not know about the USS Annapolis, the worst naval disaster in history. There were 1,196 sailors and marines on that ship. And the end of five days, 317 of them survived. And Mr. Outland, who happens to be my neighbor, was one of them here from Gates County, and nothing had ever been done about it. So, I went out and in the courthouse, now, if you go to Gates County, there's a brass plaque with his picture on it when he was in the Navy, and the ship beside of it. And we had that dedicated. And the museum asked me, says, "Well, maybe we need to do something at the museum." Well, sorry, I want to make this a salute to the greatest generation. And the reason I want to say this, Paul, is because a lot of times we ride down the road, we don't think about this. But if you were 17 years old at Pearl Harbor, you're 89 now, 88, 89, 89, I think, would be. So, we have very, very few people of the greatest generation. We fought two wars on two fronts. We beat two dictatorships. If they had not have done this for us, we would be speaking Japanese and German today and not English. So, if you know any people that were in World War II, they would be, Mr. Outland, that is his birthday. He'll be 87 years old. But these guys are getting old. There's not many of them left. So, anyway, March the 17th, 2:00 PM, not 2:00 AM, we're gonna have a program to salute the greatest generation, and there's gonna be some things there about the USS Annapolis. The other thing that I took time to ride over here, it felt like about 200 miles. I didn't know what was happening, so I thought I'd better check it out. I saw the word, something about guns. And when I see guns and gun control, I get nervous. So, I thought I'd come over here and see what I could find out about what I saw in the paper this morning. Thank you, Paul.
Yes, sir. Just for your information, our board passed a resolution at our last meeting in support of the Second Amendment. That's what it was about guns. That's all I have signed up for this portion. We have some others signed up for agenda items. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak that did not sign up? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and move to, or public comment, and move to our public hearings. First one we have is public hearing in action on PB 1226, Currituck County, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, Use Standards, Chapter 5, Development Standards, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measures to Clarify Waste-Related Issues. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request is an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. It's a text amendment. It was prepared by staff with the assistance of the planning board. And what this request does is it clarifies waste-related uses in our ordinance. Currently, in our UDO, we have two, we have more. We have two, principally two waste-related uses. One is salvage and junkyards, which are grouped together, and the other is recycling centers. What the intent of this ordinance, this amendment, to do is to clarify those uses, and what it actually does is practically takes those two uses and separates them into four. So, what this proposes to do is take recycling centers and separate that into recycling centers, transfer, which centers that transfer materials. The materials come in, they're sorted, put into a truck or a container, and shipped somewhere else for the end user. And then, the other is recycling center processing, which is a facility where the materials come in, they're sorted, packaged, and put together for the end user specification on the site. So, you have recycling center transfer, recycling center processing. Then also, what this amendment does is it separates salvage yard and junkyard into two different uses. Again, as I mentioned earlier, historically, Currituck has grouped salvage yard and junkyard together. However, this creates separate uses. And the idea, the reason we did that, the reason we have the separation of uses is to try to permit land uses that have variable standards and create different permitting standards for those based on the intensity of the use. Because obviously, for example, recycling center transfer facility is probably less intense than a salvage yard or junkyard would be. That's that slide. So, let me get into those in a little more specificity. So, recycling center, processing, and transfer, what we're creating is two uses. And principally, just to give a little background, recycling centers take recyclable or recoverable materials, and they either sort those or move those to a different facility. Recyclable materials are typically single-stream materials such as cardboard, paper, glass, the things you recycle from your home. Recoverable materials can be construction and demolition or other items that are diverted from the waste stream. So, these facilities can handle those items, sort them, and send them somewhere else. What staff proposed for the recycling centers to distinguish them from salvage yards and junkyards is staff proposed that recycling centers be conducted in fully enclosed buildings. So, the sorting, the bringing in of the materials, the sorting, the transfer occurs in a fully enclosed building. So, in theory, the land use impacts from that aren't as great. The noise, the odor, that stuff occurs inside of a building, so it's less visible to adjoining properties with a corridor. And as an example, as the other end of that is if you did wanna sort those materials or bring in materials and do it not in the building, then you could be permitted as a salvage yard. And again, a salvage yard or a junkyard are different because they don't occur in a building. They occur outdoors, and thereby, you probably have more impacts on adjoining properties. Now, the one thing with the recycling centers, knowing that they're in a fully enclosed building, staff recommended that the permits for those facilities be issued administratively in the LI or HI zoning districts. What that means, if you conduct these operations in a building, then the staff can permit that administratively. I will note at this point that when the planning board heard this on the recycling center transfer, which is probably the least intense use of the four, the planning board recommended to allow a three-sided building as opposed to a four-sided building, but still maintain the administrative approval. And I think some of the speakers here will probably address that in more detail tonight. And again, the difference in the recycling centers is that, as staff proposes, they're conducted in the building, which mitigates some of the land use impacts that occur when these facilities are handling the materials outdoors in an open environment. So, let's talk about salvage yard and junkyards, the other part of this. Currituck County has historically grouped those two together as a single-use, subject to development standards, and requiring a use permit in the HI zoning district. And as this board knows, a use permit basically means there's a public hearing process that occurs to establish those uses. The only changes to this really, to salvage yard and junkyard, is simply separating the uses. We've taken salvage yard and junkyard and made them separate uses, but each still have the same development standards. They still require a use permit in the HI zoning district. So, effectively, there's not a whole lot of difference from what's on the ground, other than you've got separate permitting processes now. I'll also note that in the junkyard, we did add a standard that was in the old ordinance but didn't translate. So, there's one additional standard in junkyard that says, basically, if there's excessive trash stored on a property, it can be deemed to be a junkyard. And that's a standard we've used to enforce excessive trash litter and debris on residential lots and things of that nature. And lastly, what we did is we tried to add some definition to what is junk, what is recoverable material, and what is recyclable material. And I think the definitions that we've put together are based on, in part, state statutes, but also based on other jurisdictions. And from a land use perspective, I think they'll allow the county to manage and enforce waste-related uses. The planning board did hear this request at their January 8th meeting. They did recommend approval with the one change to recycling center transfer stations, which was to allow it to be a three-sided building instead of a fully enclosed building. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Woody? Mr. Woody, will all of these uses require the thousand-foot setback that we currently have?
They do not. The thousand-foot setback remains with the salvage yard and junkyard as we currently have. And the recycling centers, which is a new use in the new UDO, which we're taking from one to two uses, they contain a setback of 250 feet, which is about one-fourth of what the junkyard and salvage yard is. And again, the reduction in the setback for those are because they're in a building, so the land use impact should be lessened.
And that's what staff recommended?
That is.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, just a question about the recycling. You made reference to not as much impact on the environment or the land if it's in a closed environment, i.e. a building. What, if anything, does the county do to regulate the dispersal or handling of any waste material that is commensurate with that operation? Any materials that liquids that would have impacted the land, but now are inside the building? And does that have any, not knowing, does that have any impact on employees? Is that something where's the OSHA regulations or questions where it comes up to that? Because the materials, I would think, since they're in an enclosed environment, will have to be transported or dispensed, disposed of in some manner.
They do, and I don't know those, I can't recite those to you, but obviously, the state, NC Deaner, has regulations regarding the handling of materials. We have a solid waste ordinance, which I'm not sure to what extent that handles materials. But I'll also note that in this ordinance, from a zoning or land use perspective, we have prohibited the use of hazardous or chemical materials.
Thank you.
Mr. Woody, if I may ask, what high-tech, I know it's called high-tech recycling and Moyoc, but what does that fall under? Because I know some of its, our recycling centers, a lot of it's indoors and some of it's outdoors. What is that? A salvage yard. That's classified as the whole facility?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Anyone else? What classification do the county facilities fall under?
There is a land use in the ordinance that is specifically for county convenience centers.
Are we considered a transfer station or a recycling center?
You are considered neither of those. You are considered a public convenience center slash transfer station. It is a land use that is expressly written for the county's public convenience centers.
But aren't our uses the same as what's being proposed? How, our use, how is our use different than what one of these is?
Probably the principal way it's different is it's operated by the public government, by you, the board of commissioners. But beyond that, it does require a use permit to be permitted. I don't have the standards or funding for those, but I guess I'll say the principal difference is that it's operated by the county. It's a public service provided by this board and this organization, as opposed to, these other uses are typically undertaken by private entities.
So, if you're processing and transfer, either one of those, you have to be in an enclosed building?
As proposed, yes, sir.
Now, the planning board amended that to say a three-sided building. Would that still be enclosed except for that one side?
It would be, it would still include a roof. It would just have one open side. And that was just for the transfer facilities.
And the staff would decide, in other words, if they want to, it's 250 foot, no, it's a thousand.
It's 250.
250 foot. What if they decide they want that to face the neighborhood, that side, or the highway or whatever? The open side.
I think that would defeat the purpose of having it in an enclosed building. So, if the board of commissioners elects to allow three-sided buildings, I think we should add some language about where that open side faces. I think we should address that.
How do other communities typically address these? An enclosed buildings or three-sided?
Most communities require recycling centers to have use permits and go through a public hearing process. In this instance, it's an administrative approval, so it wouldn't come to a public hearing process. So, I think this board, if you want to leave it as administrative, would probably need to address that in language or in ordinance. Or you can make it a use permit, and then you can address that as part of a public hearing process.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'm gonna open the public hearing. The first person we have signed up is Clay Cartwright. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Clay Cartwright, 382 North Gregory Road. And I'm pretty much standing up here to like to see possibly one of two things. Either use the state language that's already set up for junkyards and adopt the four exceptions they have, which I'm not even sure what all four of them are, but one of them in there says that if it's screened, it gets allowed within a thousand feet of a major highway, which in DOT, the major highway is also, in their, in their language there, it pertains to a federal aid highway. But y'all can do that however. I feel like that if a business is screened, that the thousand-foot setback shouldn't apply. Or reduce the setback 500 feet, 250, same as recycling. Either or. I think that would be suitable, and I think it would be reasonable, and it wouldn't be so restrictive that businesses would have an extremely hard time finding a place to do business. That's basically what I'd like to see done. Any questions? I mean, I'm more than glad to answer any questions you had.
Any questions?
I have a question. When you say screen, what do you mean? I mean, when you mean screen for some kind of buffer or something?
A limit visibility, either by fences that are almost non-visible through, double-slatted. You could do height. So, you can't see now. I mean, I'm not talking a 30-foot wall, but you know, the biggest thing people seem to have problems with is the cycliness of things. And if you look at high-tech, high-tech was there before the four-lane highway was built. It's in a curve. The top of the road is almost at the top of the fence. So, in that case, had the fence been taller, you wouldn't see a lot of what's going on in there. You see the top of a machine here or there, so forth. But the screening, that would do away with a lot of the cyceliness of it. It's a good business. I mean, the county and their newsletters, advertisers, you know, their convenience centers as recycling centers and list all the things in there that they take, and a lot of them are more than what a junkyard or salvage yard or some of these recycling centers are allowed to take. It's a good, it's a good business. It's friendly. It's taken things that are not in productive use and putting it back into productive use. And it creates jobs. It's probably one of the better job creators right now out there. It's been a thriving business in the bad times. Any other questions? I'd be more than glad to answer anything. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Klebitz. Also ask you to give your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is David Klebitz. I live at 2039 Edington Street in Kill Devil Hills, North Carolina. I am here tonight as an interested citizen in this matter and someone who has worked with staff over the past four to five months in the development of the language that you have here for you tonight. And there's a couple of issues that I still have with what has been proposed, and if you don't mind, I'd like to take a couple of minutes and go over that. I'll try to make it as easy as possible and as short as possible, so.
Short is good.
Yes, I understand. And what I'm gonna do is, the first item I want to talk about is on page eight of your handout or the agenda item tonight, and it's in regards to the recycling transfer and the three-sided building request. As Ben indicated, it's currently going to be a requirement that it be in a fully enclosed building, excuse me. What we've requested from the beginning was a three-sided building, basically because that is the industry standard. I've worked with Bay Disposal, someone who was interested in developing at the southern end of the county, and you know, they have a lot of experience in this in Virginia. And typically, what they use for a transfer station is a three-sided building. Generally, it's composed of concrete push walls on three sides and metal building the rest of the way up to the roof. It's my understanding that having a door or the fourth side is just infeasible, too much to have to open and close a door of that size to allow the full-size trucks that would be utilizing that building on a regular basis. So, essentially, what you would end up with is a four-sided building that's got a door on it that's open all the time. There is a gentleman here tonight from Bay Disposal. If you guys have any specific questions or would like to hear any more information about the industry standard and why they're actually asking for a three-sided building, I'm sure he would be happy to answer any of those questions that you have on that. But essentially, the first item that we're requesting is that you change the requirement from fully enclosed to a three-sided structure on the transfer only, not processing.
Let me interrupt you a second. What do we have at our maple transfer station?
It's a three-sided building.
Three-sided?
Yes, sir.
This question I'll ask in just a minute.
And the transfer area?
Yes, sir, it's three-sided.
Okay. Continue.
The second item that I would like to discuss is the actual definition of junk. And this relates back to clarifying the difference between a junkyard and a salvage yard. As Mr. Woody indicated earlier, we've created two recycle center uses, and we've created a junkyard and a salvage yard use, where before they were the same. The way that we have achieved, or the staff has achieved, the inability for someone to call a recycling center a junkyard is they've added one sentence to the end of this that says junk does not include materials used for recycling purposes as part of an approved recycling center. So, if you're operating a recycling center, if you have any of the items that are listed as junk, it's not going to be considered junk because you haven't, it's part of an approved facility. All I'm requesting is that you add the word salvage yard to that. We've gone through the process. We're creating a salvage yard use to separate it from a junkyard. A salvage yard is much like a recycling center, except that it's outdoors. They're not in the business to leave vehicles and junk sitting out on the property for long periods of time. They're in the business to turn it over, and they are by definition, the new definition that's being adopted here for a salvage yard. They are in the business of handling recyclable and recovered materials, just like recycle centers are. But this condition here only talks about junk as it relates to recycle centers and not salvage yards. So, this kind of is a prelude into the next couple of items that I wanted to talk about. And that's actually standards being different for a junkyard and a salvage yard, as Mr. Woody indicated. Yes, there's been a new salvage yard use created, but the standards are the same there for, as a junkyard. So, there's really no difference here from what was, or what was originally in the ordinance in terms of what the standards are. So, if the board wishes to consider different standards for each type of use, then I think it's important that you include salvage yard or add salvage yard in to the end of the junk definition so that someone can't come in and just call a salvage yard a junkyard, because they are two different uses. So, that was the second item, is include salvage yard at the end of the definition of junk as an addition to the recycle center uses. The third item is the standards for junkyards and salvage yards. Really, the primary difference between those, and I actually had come up with a set of standards that I had shared with staff, as far as a salvage yard is concerned, I had included a lot of the same language that recycle centers. included a lot of the same language that recycle centers' standards came with. And I actually have that, and I can handle that stuff out to you guys if you're interested in looking over that. And I'm not gonna spend the time to go down each and every one of those things unless you guys prefer and have specific questions on them. The first page that you'll receive is an outline of the salvage yard standards and the junkyard standards, based on my recommendations that I had shared. If you look at the salvage yard, the only thing that I'm recommending that be changed, and this is along the same lines as what Mr. Cartwright had spoke to earlier, and that's the reduction, or not necessarily the reduction, but an amendment to the thousand-foot setback to a primary highway. Right now, it just says a thousand-foot to residential district, lot, school, daycare, or a major arterial right-of-way. There are no exceptions to that currently. The general statute of North Carolina, the Junkyard Control Act, has the thousand-foot setback, which is where I believe this thousand-foot originally came from. But the Junkyard Control Act also has four exemptions to that. And the primary exemption to that is if you properly screen the site, they don't really go into detail on what properly screened is. It's up to the Department of Transportation to determine that. But if it's screened, then the thousand-foot setback does not apply. So what I have proposed for the county to consider is leave the thousand-foot setback in there if you're not gonna screen it. If you're gonna require them to screen it, which the ordinance already does require that the junkyards and salvage yards be screened, that you reduce that setback. I was considering 500 feet to provide a greater setback than the 250-foot setback that the recycling centers have. The second page attached to that is actually a list of county uses and the attributed setbacks to those required in the new ordinance, just to give you some reference to what other type of uses and what types of setbacks are incurred by those. And the list that I provided there, the first five of those are all required to have a use permit, and they're only allowed in the HI district, just like a junkyard and a salvage yard. The salvage yard is the only one that has a thousand-foot setback requirement to a major arterial highway. The adult entertainment has a 1,500-foot setback to a residential district or dwelling, school, religious, institute, park, daycare, but it does not have a 1,500. That setback does not apply to a major highway. An incinerator has a thousand-foot setback to residence or a school, but it only has 100-foot setback to a public right-of-way. Automotive racing and a crematory, neither one of those uses have any setbacks applied to them with regards to a major highway, except for the normal 50-foot setback, which you have for all uses in an HI district. So that's just a couple. I mean, you can go on and see the others. I won't go into those. But the first five up there are exactly the same. They require a use permit and are only allowed in the HI district, and those are the setbacks that are applied to those. So with regards to the thousand-foot setback, I'm just recommending that the board consider allowing the screening exemption and still applying a 500-foot setback. So you know, if you want to be 1,000 feet away from arterial highway, that's great. You don't, you may not necessarily have to screen. If you want to be between 1,000 feet and 500 feet, then you will be required to screen it. That's, that was my recommendation. And that's for both a salvage yard and a junkyard. That is the only thing that I was recommending a change to the junkyard standards, was that thousand-foot setback requirement. In terms of a salvage yard, item C, you shouldn't be allowed to burn any type of matter, not just non-vegetative matter. That's, I believe, a condition of the recycle center use. Again, a lot of these other items that I have listed on that in red on my salvage yard standards are a mix of the junkyard standards and the recycling center standards. So now that I may have confused everybody, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you have questions?
No. He just hit on a good point. He's thoroughly confused me, and quite frankly, everything I'm hearing, I would just assume if we table this thing and have a work session on it, just where we can at least, I mean, evidently, staff does not agree with some of the comments that are here because evidently they're not in what we've got. And I would just like to get it worked out, where we do it, get it as right as we can the first time.
Yeah, I think that certainly will not hurt my feelings either. But I do, we do have another speaker. I want to allow another speaker and finish the public hearing before we do any, make any motions. Does anyone have any other questions of Mr. Klebitz?
Klebitz.
Klebitz?
Klebitz, yes, sir.
I can slaughter a name. I apologize.
I just slaughtered all you guys, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Horatio Newburn IV.
Horatio Newburn, 105 Wendy Hill Court, Idlet, North Carolina. I'd like to speak to this. I don't agree with making recycling centers at a closer setback than what you required me to do. I had my place screened, and you still made me move back. So I would like to see the setback stay at a higher than 250 feet. But if they do go to less than two, less than 1,000 foot, I would definitely like to see it in a, at least a three-sided building for waste-related uses.
And your setback is 1,000 foot, correct?
It's at 800 feet.
800 feet. Okay.
And, and there are some things that I really believe that you need to go back and look at some of the wording before you vote on this to straighten out some, some points that the previous speakers had, had taken up.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we had signed up to speak. Well, it's not a special use permit, so if there's anyone else that would like to speak, please come forward now. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll take a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We table this until further meeting, to have the opportunity to have a work session and try to get it halfway right.
I'll second that motion.
I think that's a good motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. We'll schedule a work session either at our next meeting or the one following that and try to get, give staff time to work through this. Y'all schedule it when you're ready to discuss it further. And with that, we'll move to administrative reports to award the bid for Maple Park Expansion Phase One and authorize county manager to sign contract. Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd just make a general comment as we came out of our retreat and we started sharing with you, staff started sharing with the board, our, our capital improvements plan. It's been brought to my attention that we've got to title the project something so everybody understands what it is we're talking about. And sometimes we use rather generic titles, and this project was one of those. We used a multipurpose field, but I just wanted to make a comment that, as you'll see as we go through this bid, there's generally a lot of elements that goes into what the project is, that takes the project well beyond what the phrase might be in your, in your capital improvements plan. And this is gonna be one of them that hopefully the, the public is excited about. But on the capital, your capital improvements plan, this is carried as multipurpose fields. But as you'll see as we work through this, this project actually includes a lot more than just multipurpose field. Showing you on the screen, this is the maple master plan that we've been working under for a couple of years now. Want to zoom in. This project, this phase that we're working on is that area right there in the red box, which is predominantly the, the multi-use fields, soccer, football, et cetera. And next slide, please. This project is not only the construction of the three fields, but as you see, the top to, to the top left-hand, where the yellow circle is, is a totlot, a, and you'll see a picture of what we proposed there. You've got your three fields. You've got between the, the centerline of the three fields, you see the three red structures. Those are picnic shelters. As you keep moving north, Ben, you'll hit that last one, which is actually a concession stand. There's walking trails. There's parking. So although we're calling it multipurpose field, there's actually a lot of different elements that's, that's in, considered in this particular phase that we're undertaking. This project was bid out. We had five contractors to accept bids. This is actually a rendering of what the concession and bathroom shelter looks like. The next one, this is what the typical picnic shelter would look like, and there's three of those in the main facility, and you'll see one of the bid alternates. The area between the cooperative extension and the community center also was scheduled to have one of these buildings, so the fourth one will go there. And that's a general rendering of sort of what the totlot looks like. So those are the elements we're being talking about. Again, there was five bidders that bid on the project. AR Chesson was the low bidder. We provided in your agenda package a breakdown of what the original bid was, what the bid alternate was, and how we came to the presentation we're doing tonight. The bid when it first came in was slightly over the amount of funds that we had available, so we did go back to the contractor and did some value engineering. There's some small modifications that we did to the overall design to save some funds. There's also six bid alternates. We're only recommending four. We cut two of those out, and we brought the bid down to the price that you see in your agenda package. The second thing that's a little unique about this project that we did is, we went ahead and took the, the totlot area out of the base bid, and we put together a part of a, a grant funding program together that we've submitted. We actually had a public hearing on that, I think, the last couple of weeks for that particular project. And now we're, we're submitting that to the state to attempt to receive 50% funding for that portion of the project. So tonight, what we're asking for is, is the board's approval to move forward with AR Chesson, and for a contract, an amount of $2,467,164. The part of piece has been removed. Hopefully, when we hear about that award, we'll be able to come back and bring that project to you to complete it. But tonight, this is what we're bringing forward. Hopefully, you've seen the elements that we're discussing. This is the next phase of project out at the Maple Park, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions?
Just a comment. Glad to see us moving forward with it. There was an article not long ago about the county had fund, or found, $3.1 million. And I, I think it would be very noteworthy if Mr. Scanlon would explain that somewhat as to the funding and how this has all been part of a process to get to where we're at.
Yes, sir. It's, it's, I guess it's the word "found" that's, that kind of throws everybody. We do have a capital improvements plot project. We've been working off this list for quite some time. There's many projects on it. Projects go on that list initially at the engineer's best estimate or a, a proposed project cost. When those projects are bid out, sometimes they unfortunately could come in and cost more than what you actually funded, and sometimes they come in less. We've had the fortunate goodwill for a while now. We've been running some projects that have all gone to our advantage, and we've been having savings off of our projects. Some of the projects have allowances in it. If you don't expend the full allowance, when the project's over, you have a residual. We have taken residual funds or funds that were not used for construction for projects that we've been building over the last several years. We've brought those funds together, and we've compiled them to fund this particular phase of the project that we're bringing forward tonight. So it wasn't really found money. It was money that was incorporated into our capital plans, money that hasn't been spent that was saved either through saving money in the project, not using the whole allowance, projects coming in under budget. But for those purposes, or for those reasons, we ended up having funds that were left over, and we had a budget amendment, project amendment, I think, that's brought to you at a previous meeting where the finance director took the sum total of all these little residual amounts that we've, and, and put it into one particular project to fund this project that's in front of you tonight.
Just to finish that up, I think it's, it would behoove us to really thank our county manager and our staff for keeping their eye on the ball with these projects and putting us in the position to where we can do this. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
I would ditto that. Anyone else? Any questions? Hearing none, we need a motion to award the bid and authorize the county manager to sign the contract.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Item B is consideration of license agreement between County of Currituck and Whalehead Preservation Trust and Currituck County Wildlife Museum for the operation of the Whalehead Club at Heritage Park. I believe that would be Mr. McCree.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. After several drafts and a work session, and the, I would note that the Whalehead Trust has already adopted and approved this license agreement. This is presented to you for your consideration and approval. I'll just hit a couple of highlights. First of all, one of the important aspects of this license agreement is that it finally, after 20-some years, formalizes the relationship between the Whalehead Preservation Trust and the county for the operation and management of the Whalehead Club building and grounds we know as Heritage Park. This license will be proposed to be for a five-year term. Importantly, it will establish and maintain that the park, Heritage Park in particular, will be open for public access continually, and that the county will be allowed to utilize the Heritage Park grounds and facilities there for county events and its purposes to the extent that such events do not conflict with previously scheduled events by the Whalehead Preservation Trust. The Whalehead Trust will also execute documents that will establish that the assets that have been bought over a period of many years, much of it with county monies, will establish again, once and for all, that those assets belong to the people of Currituck County, and they will execute the documents establishing that. There will also be, as part of this license agreement, an amendment to the Articles of incorporation for the Whalehead Preservation Trust. That will provide that should they ever dissolve for whatever purpose or reason, all of their assets will come to the, to Currituck County to be used for public history and educational efforts, and again, establishing that these assets belong to the people of Currituck County. The Whalehead Preservation Trust will also be required to, to maintain appropriate liability and officers and directors' insurance and name the county as an additional named insurer to provide further protection to the county relative to events that occur on the property and for accidents that may happen. And another important aspect is that the license agreement will require the Whalehead Preservation Trust to, to like the county, comply with the open meetings law and the Public Records Act. This license agreement, again, is, is recommended to you for your approval, and I think it goes, it would, it would do a lot of good to have this formal agreement between the trust and the county.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. McCree? We did have a work session on this a couple of meetings ago and, and went through it line by line, and it's time to adopt or reject, so I need a motion from the board.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this license agreement.
I have a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Under new business, board appointments. Appointment to Recreation Board, I believe that is, who is? Mr. Idlet.
I would like to appoint Steve Carletti from Knott's Island.
Steve Carletti?
Mm-hmm. C-A-R-L-E-T-T-I.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Appointment to Board of Adjustments?
That would be mine. It would be Shay Balance.
Shay Balance?
Shay Balance.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Number three is Appointment to Tourism Board. I believe that is...
That would also be mine as well.
Okay.
And I'd like to appoint Wanda Beasley.
Wanda Beasley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Right. And item four is an Appointment to the Small Area Plan Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint the first alternate off of our recommended list, Valerie Williams, to add her as a board member on the Small Area Plan.
Valerie Williams.
Valerie Williams.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Item B is Consent Agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion for approval. A second. Any, any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioners Report, Mr. Idlet, you want to go first?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Been made aware the last two, three days, there's some local legislation that is pending that we may or may not be interested in being a part of. The first one deals with local control of the school calendar as it is now, the state mandates when school starts and when it ends. There was a legislative goal that was established this year when I was in Raleigh to give the control back to the localities so they can deal with the specific things that they have to deal with. The mountains may have to deal with snow, the coast may have to deal with traffic, whatever, but at least give some control back to the localities. I don't know that that was going to be a favorable thing to get done, however, there is local legislation that is trying to, that's getting started, where three or four counties have asked for it for their localities. I know the manager spoke with the school superintendent today, they would like to be a part of that, so I would recommend that we let our legislative folks know that we'd like to have Currituck added to that bill.
You want to make that a motion?
Well, let me get the other one.
Okay.
The second piece is, is well, there is a, a local legislative bill that's moving that is, again, it's local legislation, there's three or four counties that are presenting this about the electronic notification for, for official meetings, something that we talked about and went to Raleigh about a couple of years ago. There's a move to get that done again, I don't know how this board feels, whether they're in favor of that or not, I just figured that I would bring it up. So if we did want to participate, we could have our manager get in touch with our legislative body and maybe see if we get Currituck added to that, so.
Okay, we have two items.
The first one, I'll make a motion, I mean, if, if the school board, if the schools is willing and wants us to do that, make a motion that we ask to, to have Currituck added to the list for local control of the school calendar.
I think that's an excellent bill, and the county should have some flexibility, as long as they get the number of days in required.
Exactly.
The county should have flexibility about making their calendar, so I certainly agree with that. So need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, and the second one was...
Electronic notification of official meetings.
That would allow the counties to electronically notify meetings?
Yes. I mean, as the, the argument has been all along, I mean, in Currituck, we have three or four different newspapers that serve our public. We have, we have to advertise in one, so, you know, the argument has always been having a means of getting the most information out to the population. I don't know if that's the way to do it or not, I'm, I'm not standing on a position here, I'm just letting you know this is something that's moving along, and I know it's something we were interested in one time before.
I think it just gives the county another venue to use.
Well, last time when this came up, I voted against it because I didn't think we should stop advertising in the newspapers. But if it's another venue that allows the county another option, but I don't want us to stop advertising in the newspapers because, I'll give you an example, my parents don't have a computer. They get their information from the public notifications in the newspapers, and I, and I will not support something that takes away that public notification in newspapers. But if this is a, an additional method the county wishes to use, I don't have a problem with that, because typically we have the Coastland Times does the Outer Banks and a lot of southern Currituck. You have the Daily Advance does a lot of the mainland as well, and then in Knott's Island, you have the Virginian Pilot. So it's like you said, we have three different newspapers.
But, but I think as it, as it's stated now, you only had to advertise in one, is that correct, Ms. King?
That is correct, yes.
Under current law, you'll have to advertise in a paper with general circulation within the county, so Currituck could do it in one of the three.
One paper.
What do we currently do?
The Coastland Times.
Well, it, it depends. Our intent is to reach the, the population that is going to be most relevant to whatever the item is that we're advertising. Most of the, the stuff that we advertise, I mean, other than planning, evidently, is the Coastland Time, but we use Daily Advance. If you're, if you're looking for a project where you think, if it's a construction project and you feel like you're going to have a better chance of reaching a Hampton Roads market, we'll make sure we put that in the Virginia Pilot. But we try to place the advertisement in the paper that's going to give us the, the greatest chance of notifying the folks that'll be most affected by the item, so it's not a set thing, it's always the Daily Advance. We move through, those three papers we do move through, and sometimes we advertise in News Observer in Raleigh, if we feel like we better have a better shot of getting the folks that we're trying to target with the advertisement. So we kind of, we do it based on, you know, what, what the target market is we're trying to...
But the county's not looking for a way to not advertise in the papers, are we?
No, sir, we're looking to be able to maximize all the means that are available now to reach the public, including social media, which I believe when the statutes were written, never thought social media, I mean, it was never even an item. So now this will give us the opportunity to use all kinds of different avenues, because again, the intent is to notify as many people as we can possibly notify of whatever it is we're, we're, we're seeking to do.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of that, I just want to make sure that we're not going to shut down the newspaper advertising because of this, that's, I won't agree to that, but I don't have a problem with giving us additional means of legal advertising.
Well, I'll, I'll put a plug in, the, our, the county staff is just, it's an expansion of what reverse 911 system is, the, the public will be learning about this soon in one of the upcoming newsletters. There's going to be a program now that we could offer where I think planning is going to be one of the departments that takes advantage of it. If a citizen has an interest in what's going on in planning, they could sign up and they will get, they can get cell phone texts, they can get telephone calls, but anytime the planning department does any kind of event, they'll have this, anybody who's signed up for it, they'll have this mechanism to push that out, and it can be pushed through cell phones, home phones, text messages, but there, there's other means now that's being developed of how you can communicate with the public who have an interest in knowing, other than specifically newspaper.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know how the bill's written, I don't have a clue about that, all I know is I received something that said that was, it was moving forward on a local bill, so I, I can't tell you whether it's exclusive, exclusive or what.
How about we pass on this and get us a copy of the bill before we go and attach ourselves to something that may not be exactly...
Fine.
Just as a question, would we have to, if we were going to utilize it as an additional venue, would it even, would it even require going to the state to even address being attached to that?
Nope, I don't believe it would.
If we're just going to use it as an additional, not a, an exclusive, but an additional?
Correct.
Would, would there be, would this be a moot point, I guess I'm asking, relative to the legislative bill that's moving forward at this time?
I, I don't know, but I believe you certainly have a point. I believe it probably is the, the latter, as, as you were saying, that it would allow the electronic means to take the place of the other stuff. I, I...
I'd like to see a copy of the bill.
I would too.
The, the last time we supported legislations as Commissioner Idlet, it's about two years ago, it was in lieu of, and we had presented how much money in a year we spend with newspapers advertising, and we felt like social media and other methods actually would be more successful in, in reaching the population as, well, we just thought it would be...
Again, I, I want to see it before I vote on it.
Yes, sir.
To be attached to anything that I haven't seen would just be irresponsible for this board to do.
We can get you a copy of the bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
On something like this.
One last comment on, on both these items, it's the general, I guess, rule of General Assembly, if, I think it's 20, if 20 counties sign up on a local bill, it automatically becomes a statewide bill. So I think one of the things like on, on the school calendar, I think they are looking, the Association of County Commissioners are looking for counties to sign up because it's a way to convert a local bill into a statewide bill, when it shows that level of interest to, to get converted.
Well, I, I realize we have two freshman legislators, and they're getting their feet wet and doing a pretty good job, but we used to get some notification about when the deadline for local bills was, and it was by March something, I believe, when...
We got that in one of the bulletins from the, the state...
I think the Association sent it out, it's, it's, they, they set that one, as part of the rules when they, when they come to session.
It is like March 25th.
That's for, that's for us presenting local legislation.
If we want a local bill, now...
If this is someone else presenting local legislation, so...
These have been introduced, my understanding, both these bills have been introduced.
But it's my understanding, we don't have anything local that we wish to introduce at this time.
That's correct.
But if we, if there is something we have till March 25th, so we've got two more meetings, Board of Commissioner meetings, if we have local legislation we wish to submit. Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Ms. Gilbert?
The only thing I have is we, the Small Area Plan met with the Stakeholders Committee, and I think they had a great meeting, again, kudos to the planning department and Holly White, she did an exceptional job on facilitating that meeting. And the other thing is March 1st, the Currituck House is having their annual fundraiser, the hog wash, so I'd ask my colleagues to join me, and this will be the third year of washing a hog. Mr. McCord, we had a great time last year doing that, so I would invite you to join me again, but that's March 1st at the Currituck House. Get there around 3 o'clock so you get a good seat and get to know the hogs that we're going to be washing prior to the event, and then you can get a nice barbecue dinner as the fundraiser.
All right, Mr. McCord, do you have anything?
The only thing I'd like to say, last year, Coach Justin Hill from the high school baseball team had put on an alumni baseball dinner, which was hosted at the, the high school, and Currituck Barbecue did the, did the food for it. I'm not sure of the exact dollar amount, but I know they raised over $1,000, and I'm sure most everybody here has been to a high school baseball game. Myself played there four years, and they got a really nice ball field, I know some of the money goes to that. Speaking with Coach Hill, I'm going to add a, something that I personally am going to host, we're going to have a, a golf outing, and hope to raise a couple thousand dollars to donate from my facility and grandy to, to the high school baseball program, and that's all going to be on March 23rd. I'll plug more on that. Like I said, it's just going to be an additional venue to go with that, and they should be able to raise a few thousand dollars. Like I said, last year, there was over 200 former, former players there from the history, I guess, from the county, so it was a pretty, pretty big success.
Anything else? Mr. Griggs?
I have nothing.
Mr. Martin?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
One more event, Friday night at, I'm sorry, I totally, it slipped my mind, the Charboro Ruettens, there is a fundraiser at the Charboro Ruettens Friday night, it's a spaghetti dinner for $7, and this benefits the Currituck lacrosse team, so I would ask that you come out and support the lacrosse team in their fundraising efforts for spaghetti dinner.
That's this Friday or...
This Friday at the Charboro Ruettens.
I have something that's been brought to my attention. Over the last couple of years, the legislature borrowed money from the federal government to shore up workers' compensation, and it's my understanding the legislature just passed a bill and the governor signed it that are going to assess the counties a portion of the payback on workers' compensation, which is going to hit some counties pretty hard versus other counties, and me personally, I don't like it a bit that the state borrows the money, spends it, and then puts the burden on the counties to help pay it back. So I asked Mr. Scanlon to share a little bit with us, if he had a chance today, what the burden, and a little bit more about how that works for the general public, because it's going to be an assessment on Currituck County for something we didn't do.
It, it's actually unemployment compensation.
What'd I say?
You said workers' comp. It's not workers' comp, it's, it's unemployment, unemployment payments.
I'm sorry.
Over the last several years, the state of North Carolina has borrowed money from the federal government to be able to continue to provide those funds to folks in need. They borrowed to the extent now that they have a $2 billion deficit with the federal government, and they had to come up with a plan to pay that back. Historically, local governments have not participated in the, the annual payment that goes into a fund. Most businesses know that every quarter when they file their, their employment taxes, one of the things they have to file is the federal and state unemployment tax, it's a percentage times your wage, and they have to submit money in quarterly. Local governments do not participate in that. Local governments are responsible 100% for any claims that goes against that local government from an employee who might have left services that qualified for unemployment insurance. What the General Assembly has done is, next year, we were actually, it's going to be a transition year, local governments now will have to participate in the program. The transition year, which is our, is next year, we actually have to do both. We will have to make a payment into the state fund, and we will also have to pay 100% of any claim that we have against us by an employee that may have left us. In the second year, we go into just having to pay into the fund. It is a 1% per the first $29,900 an employee makes, you have to pay, so it means the max we'll pay is $209 per employee, we will have to pay into the fund. For us, that is going to be somewhere between $80,000, $85,000 that we will have to include in our budget next year, or the budget we're getting ready to prepare, that historically we've never had to pay, and we're not anticipating in paying it. So not only are we going to have another challenging budget cycle to start off with, but now we're hit with this additional payment that the state is passing on to local governments to help, I guess, do our share or be part of the $2 billion payback plan that they've put together.
That they borrowed?
That they borrowed, yes.
I just wanted to bring that up for the public and express my dissatisfaction with causing the counties to pay for their discretion. That's all I have. Mr. Scanlon, do you have...
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Hearing that, need a motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye.